Good evening and welcome to the December 23 regular Select Board meeting. If you'd all please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. A motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion would be in order to approve the December 9th Select Board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? You have none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. Is anybody online?
Well, I'm just gonna say. So, I mean, the week's been cold and snowy, but the fortunate part is that the rink's been able to be open for skating. So that's been great with activities. And also with the snow and cold, our guys have been out cleaning the roads and I think they're doing an excellent job. So I just wanted to say.
Yeah, I've organized too, Judy.
All right, moving on. The warrants are going around. Everybody has a chance to sign those. And, okay. So Jeff, we're on to you.
Hi. My name is Jeffrey Lewis. I'm from Aldrich, New York. We've been working with you guys on a number of water and wastewater projects. Tonight I'm here to speak and more than anything else, answer any questions that you guys have about the ongoing wastewater treatment facility project that has been ongoing for a little while now. I believe that we have sent along a mailer that has gone out to your residents, which gave some background information and that the desire was basically to just have additional, kind of have me available to discuss any questions or concerns that have kind of come up with that. The quick, brief overview of the project as far as how we got to where we are. There was an evaluation done in your facility. Much of the equipment that has been, that is there has been in operation now for well over 20 years. Typically wastewater equipment has a lifespan of about 20 years. And your plant has kind of reached that point where the UV system in particular has kind of reached the end of its service life, along with the aeration equipment that's inside of the treatment lagoons. And the treatment lagoon liners have all, have all kind of reached the end of their expected service life and need to be replaced at this point. When doing those replacements, it would be advisable, and you guys have also reached the stage where it's advisable to replace, to remove the sludge out of your wastewater treatment lagoons. Sludge removal is a regular part of operating a lagoon facility. And you guys have not had the opportunity to complete a sludge removal in many years.
Do you know how long it's been?
It has been at least 20, to my knowledge.
Okay.
It has been, it has been a, it has been a long time since the lagoons have been cleaned. The most recent sludge depth measurements were more positive. So it, back when we first started this process about two years ago, there was one that looked like there was a dangerous level of sludge in your lagoons. It's looking better now. Don't really know where that sludge went, if I'm being honest with you, so hoping that you just have a better. Just hopefully you have a better, a better reading of the sludge at this point and that things have just improved. So you're definitely due for that. That's, that's a, that's a maintenance item that should be done. So when you crack all that stuff down to what I just said, the improvement in replacing a lot of your aged equipment and kind of doing all the age-related stuff at the wastewater treatment facility is about a $2.4 million project. So it's, it's a large project in and of itself. The sludge removal, getting that out is another massive effort. That's about $2 million worth of work. So when you put those two big things together, you're looking at what is a sizable project for a town of your size or for any town. It's, it's like a four and a half million dollar construction project. By the time you get engineering fees and all that out of the way, we have recommended that you bond for $5.4 million. We've been working on final design. I think that that was the last time that I came to talk to you guys directly was when we had our final design, design agreement. And that is, is still ongoing. Our most recent cost estimate has not moved those numbers appreciably one way or the other. So we're still in that, that same, that same town, that same land, landing zone. Looking for a bond vote that would be in the March timeframe. So I think you guys need us to firm up a number before you guys, so you guys can put that out and get that, get that together to warn your residents and make sure that everybody's on the same page for the project. Judy, what else would you like me to touch on?
I think you touched, I mean, primarily a lot of it was coming here in case other people had questions, but obviously, unless you guys came for this. But, I mean, I think there's been a few phone calls. Honestly, I personally have not had any.
Okay.
I think there's been a couple that people questioned about the monthly charges going up. You know, like I said, it could vary depending, we don't know. Like you said, we could go down there and see that the sludge is really, is reduced compared to what it originally was, which would really cut back a lot of that cost. And depending on what we can get for grants and funding to help, you know. We're, I think our next step was, do we have another meeting before town meeting to get information out there?
Absolutely. So typically, we would come down at your town meeting.
Right, yeah.
Usually, most towns hold a meeting right before their town meeting day.
Yeah.
Or, or on their town meeting day. And we'll come with a presentation that, that one over in a fancy slideshow.
Okay.
And just answer any questions anybody has as well. But, yeah, we remain available if anybody has any questions or if anybody has anything that comes up to kind of walk through the project and kind of walk through where we're at.
I think that would be helpful. And I think if people have visuals, you know, like up to see and stuff like that, it's, it's clearer to them what's going on and.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and to touch quickly on the funding aspect that you were talking about. There's a few different major ways that projects such as these are funded. One of them is through the State of Vermont Clean Water Fund. That is the tract that we've kept this project in thus far. And that has some good advantages. Engineering has a 50% subsidy. And in construction, you have up to another $100,000 per year subsidy. So there's some decent subsidies that are kind of right up the top and all those kind of administrative costs, such as, such as myself and kind of those other necessary evils that go along with doing a project such as this. And then the other thing that this SRF program has is additional grant funding in the form of a pollution control grant. If you look at the $22 a month figure that's in there, that's kind of just assuming that you, and justice is a strong word. That's assuming that you use this project and fund it solely through the SRF program with what we've seen from typical communities. The advantage to doing that and kind of what you usually can't get is any subsidy help whatsoever on your sludge removal because sludge removal is a typical O and M maintenance item. The exception in why that would be qualifying for this particular project is because the liners need to be replaced, which kind of protect the earthen lagoons that you have from having water seep out of them. And a necessary step in order to do the liner replacements is to remove the sludge. So you're kind of lassoing in some grant and subsidy funding for something that you typically would not be eligible for, which is why we were recommending that you try to do both of those at the same time. There's another program out there, the USDA RD Apply, which might be a good fit for you guys. It would, it looks like it'd be pretty close and we can talk more about that, Judy, as far as looking to go down that road if not, if, if that's something you guys are interested in doing. But we're keeping you in the SRF funding path for now.
And didn't we use USDA when we did the $6.4 million water? Because then that came with a negative. And then there was loan forgiveness with that.
Yep. See, your, your community, it has a pretty favorable loan forgiveness rate.
Yeah.
So the USDA program has two things, two components to it. They do grant funding and they also do an interest rate that's basically market dependent.
Right.
A year ago, the market was not as good as the market rate is currently. So that funding source has become more attractive over the past year. The downside to that funding source and just the kind of thing that you don't know, and that's why things are kind of a little bit in the air. USDA won't pull together an actual full funding offer for you until a lot of pieces are complete, so.
Well, I think it was until the bond week.
So the bond vote has to be complete. We'd submit an application within the next month or so, which would be, that'd be a little bit of a haul. It's definitely doable at this point, but it would be a little bit of a challenge to get that in, in time, but we should, we can definitely do it.
Yeah.
And then by the time that they finish going through and doing their entire process, you probably wouldn't hear anything until June or July as to what your funding package would look like through them, which isn't a problem for your project, but that's just something to be aware of as far as that goes.
And I think that's the way it was for water. It was all kind of based on those things. And then it had a negative interest rate, so we had a pretty good loan forgiveness with that, so. And just about everything we're gonna do is gonna have to be pulled together here within the next month because town reports have to be draft by January 21st. So everything's gonna have to be in that to go out. So let's say the 15th of January is really kind of be a deadline where anything that's going in the book is gonna have to be in there.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
And then I guess just to be aware, you wouldn't have a good idea from them what your final loan terms are. Like for the, like, we can present what that might look like, but we wouldn't have a good idea of what USDA loan. Like I can tell you exactly what the SRF number would be.
Yeah.
I can't tell you what the USDA RD number would be.
But SRF isn't gonna give us loan forgiveness.
They will. So there's that pollution control grant portion. The percentage is a little bit variable on that. Currently, you're assuming about a 20% loan forgiveness on that.
Okay.
Or grant funding is the word that they use.
Okay.
Both programs are, are expected to be about considerable, but it's worth probably trying to go down and see what the two, the two different funding sources actually shake out of.
Yeah, I think if you, yeah, our town meeting is on Monday, right before we vote on Tuesday. So I think having, like you said, a slide presentation would be great. I'm sure there's lots of people in town that don't even know what the wastewater treatment facility looks like.
I have to give you those credit. I think this is my fourth time here talking about this. So you guys have made as much of an effort as you can and let people know about it.
And I think the flyer that you guys put together was great. That one, I think that was helpful. So, and that certainly had a lot of information packed into it, so.
And there was a reporter that called to ask about it. And he said, he purposely did it to try to get information out there to draw attention so people would be.
It was right on the front page, above the folds.
Happy to discuss, we're not trying to do anything in the dark here.
No, I know. And that's the whole goal, yeah. That, so people don't come that Monday and are like, you know, gobsmacked, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, it's been a question of mine since we first started talking about this. Where is, where, where's the sludge gonna go?
It's a good question.
That was a big question that's been floating around for, for 10, 15 years.
And so part of, part of what's going on in the overall state right now is that there's a sludge management debate happening. Wastewater sludge can contain a component known as PFOS, the polyfluorinated substances that, that have been shown to potentially link to a cancer risk. What that has done is it's limited landfill application points. To directly answer your question, it would likely, your sludge will likely get trucked up to Canada. There's a facility known as Envelope up there that is still accepting wastewater immune sludge. The other potential landing spot for it is Casella. And what happens is the sludge is pumped out, is dredged out of the lagoon. It's mixed with a chemical that helps get some of the water out of it. Usually it's run through a, a unit that basically dewater's the sludge partially, so it's easier to truck. And then it's trucked to a landfill is, is what we typically do with, with sludge. 25, 30 years ago, all that sludge would be phenomenal, it would be, it would be considered a prime applicant for, for land application. And it works as kind of like a fertilizer. Right now, that is very much not an option just because of the PFOS concern. So part of, part of why the number on the sludge removal is so high is because there's been a, a search for where to, what to do with sludge. And that'll be kind of the first step when we actually start doing your plant would be to do that sludge removal and kind of that, that process to start off with.
At one time, I heard that Canada wasn't accepting it.
And it is back open for now, so.
That's changed, which is good and.
Well, that was during COVID, wasn't it?
During COVID is when this, it was kind of a double hit of like everything being closed because of COVID. And PFOS is like a brand new thing that everybody was really paying attention to. And, and I think that's one, I think everybody's kind of heard a little bit more about now and will continue to be more familiar with as we kind of get, get up to speed on that, but yeah.
So will your company decide ultimately who brings it to Casella versus Canada?
Fair question. We would solicit bids and go with whatever the most cost-effective way is for the town. We'll help manage that for sure. And that would be kind of something that would be more of on the front end, something that will help manage the town do directly so that you don't end up paying a middleman to kind of do that sludge cleanout part.
So everything basically is gonna be torn out of the blower building?
Yes. So the blower building, that, that's the, that is the plan. So you have three, you have four blowers in there. Actually, one of the blowers will remain. He's a little guy. There's no reason to do anything with him. He's doing quite well. You have three main blowers in there that have all reached the end of their lifecycle. Those would all be replaced. And then you have an old, it's called a motor control cabinet, which has a bunch of futuristic-looking switches. That's kind of reached the end of its life. It would be replaced with something that you have in your basement, like a, like a panel, like a typical energy panel with a direct drive, with a variable frequency drive next to it. So that's, that's the plan in that building.
Will that be controlled from the existing building, the, the other building on the right hand?
So your, your current, your current building that's there, that's a laboratory space right now. And right now, all the power is going through the blower building. It'll still go through the blower building. In the control building itself, the plan is to just improve operator comfort there. You have a great dedicated team of operators and they don't have a lot of office space. So one of the plans would be to get that space a little bit renovated to make it better for them to work out of. But the main power would not necessarily go through that area. Yeah.
Hey. Appendix D of the booklet that you gave us. You know, there's a estimated worksheet or a budget worksheet for other age-related improvements. And in there, there's demolition, demolition of the blower building.
Yep.
And demolition of the control building.
Yep.
And so that is still a goal. Those buildings also will be torn down, or they will be torn down?
So, no. So demolition in that sense is referring to the actual components on the inside, not the, not the buildings themselves. But within the spaces, so we were talking about the motor control panels. That's like a, it's about as tall as your tree here and it goes over to the wall. It's like a big unit. So the, the physical effort to like take those, those pieces out of the inside of the building, not necessarily to demolish the whole building, but internal demolition would probably be a better, a better descriptor of that.
Okay. And then where it says the control building HVAC improvements, you know.
We had a hefty budget there, yeah.
That's $55,000?
That's, that's, so we wanted to give ourselves, it was a preliminary engineering and part of why that number hasn't changed is because we, we like to make that number as conservative as possible up at the front. We do have a, a mechanical engineer that will be digging into the final design here and we'll get to sharpen those numbers out when we get to about 60%.
Okay, but the mechanicals will be replaced?
That is the.
In addition to the blower?
In that building, yes, that is correct.
Are we gonna be using the same chemicals out of the, at the?
Yep.
North End?
Yeah, you guys are using FX 300 or 3000. It's a, it's a coagulant that I think a lot of towns that are using it are quite happy with it right now.
Yeah.
And yes, we are not planning to make any changes to the way that you guys operate your facility. You might notice your energy bill go down a little bit with the revised aeration and with the new blower system. And also when we replace the UV, the control panel will be replaced and the bulbs themselves have gotten a little bit better. So you'll notice your energy costs go down from that as well. But your overall process is exactly the same as what you're currently doing now.
Yeah, we, we won't have anything, there isn't any reason to have the need of having a diver come in there probably as often as we have in the past.
So.
Of course, that's a question too.
We'll see how that goes, yeah. You've had, you've had some concerns there that were able to be addressed. But that, nothing that we're doing will change the need or, or change the diver need potentially if there's an issue that develops. One thing that is proposed as part of the project that's being designed around is an overflow pipe to help with continuing to maintain operation of the lagoons if you do have a clog.
From one to the other, yeah.
Yep.
Sure. All right, great.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? All right, I guess we'll see you at town meeting.
I look forward to it. Thank you very much for having me.
All right, thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you before.
Sounds good, Judy.
Yeah, have a great holiday and say hi to Wayne.
Will do. Wayne is retiring on Friday, so. Wayne is retired on Friday. Have a great day, guys.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Are you guys here for the budget?
We were here for the Mortimer project.
The Mortimer project? No. It's not gonna be till the 13th of January. Because what we do, when I get them, I get them all, we get them all together and present them to the board. And they all haven't come in yet.
We weren't sure if.
Yeah, sorry. I thought I mentioned, yeah. So, um, because like, I know if you have one and there's a couple other entities that wanted to submit one. So it's easier if they review them all at once. So it'll be the next meeting, which is January 13th, their first meeting, so. I just don't want you guys sitting here all night if you're doing this.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had something to add about the budget or anything. No?
Or you're just so used to coming to these meetings now that you enjoy it?
Other than I can say that I hope this year we're not gonna get changed much, but I hope that you realize that this building is now a full-time facility and the, the current budget really doesn't allow for that, so.
Oh, the rink, you mean? Okay. I never know if you're talking about fire department.
Sorry.
That's all right, no. All right, yeah. Because this will be a year out, so, yeah.
All righty.
Okay.
See you.
Thank you, guys, so.
Merry Christmas.
I'll be, oh, you know what? Let me just give you a package.
Couple more bearings, I think. Or they could be hose now, so I couldn't tell.
Thank you, guys. Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, same to you.
Did you have something to share with the board for a public comment?
No, I just came to hear your discussion on the increased sewer rates that are coming up.
So that was the presentation we just had.
Because it was third or fourth in the agenda, so I was hoping to get you in for that.
Yeah. So, um, it was just, it was basically just a little overview of the flyer that we put out. And then they will, he will be at town meeting again in March with a bigger presentation. As he discussed, our facility is over 20 years. That needs to be updated and sludge hasn't been removed for 20-plus years. And that's an estimated $2 million cost of the budget. So right now, they're guestimating that it's going to be about $22 additional a month for sewer. Water and sewer rates this year remained flat, so there were no increase. So actually, based on this, what's gonna be happening, I was surprised that the increase was that low personally. I don't know how other people felt, so. But, I mean, you're basically rehabbing a facility that hasn't been maintained for 20-plus years essentially. So did you have, I mean, if you have specific questions, Judy can take them and we can, you know, try to get answers if we can't answer them.
I know that in your flyer, it said that some of the cost was hopefully gonna be subsidized by grants and whatnot.
Sure.
And I was wondering how realistic that was and, you know, what kind of grants there may be available.
Sure.
And I guess the bottom line is, being retired on a fixed income, I mean, an increase of $22 a month doesn't seem like it's that great. But in conjunction with all the other costs that, you know, keep coming at me, it's significant.
Yeah.
And I feel pretty confident in the fact about getting grants, you know, having a portion of this subsidized so that eventually the cost won't be on the taxpayers, that full burden of 5.5 million.
So when we did the water project, which was like 6.2 or 6.4, it was kind of the same thing. We received grant funding, we received a negative interest rate. So there was a portion of it that was forgiven. As, when he was just here, he stated, one, the USDA, you need to have a positive bond vote before they will solidify the funding. The SRF is a little more, they'll probably be able to have a package for that. But I, any project we've done like that to, since I've been here, we've always received some kind of funding or some kind of forgiveness, so.
Will that bond vote occur at town meeting or after the town meeting?
It'll occur on Tuesday. It'll be by Australian ballot.
For voting.
Voting.
Yeah.
On town meeting day?
Yeah.
Okay.
On voting day. So at the town meeting that night, they'll discuss it and he'll do a presentation on it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Sorry that I was late.
No, no, that's fine. It'll be on.
We move quick, right?
Well, it'll be on pay TV. You can always go on and watch his little spiel, so, but yeah. But they'll be there Monday night, so for town meeting. So, I mean, and be able to answer any questions there too.
Very good.
If you have questions, just call me too and email me anything else and I can.
Thank you.
Okay.
And you are?
Me? Are you looking, oh, Judy Fraser.
Judy. Judy, I'm Steve Hall.
Oh, hi.
We spoke about the lake, which, by the way, was taken care of quite candidly by the power company.
Okay, all right, good. Yes, right, okay. Yeah, I wondered about that because I drove down there one night just to see it and stuff, so that's good.
Perfect, no.
Okay, awesome. Well, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, moving on to the budget. So everybody received the packet in your packet?
The only slight change I made is I did add 300 to the town clerk treasure for overtime for the next election, which is $300.
And so do we wanna, like, oh, go ahead, Albert.
The fire department.
Yep.
I think we may have an extra zero under their electricity. Comes in at $43,000.
What page is fire department?
It's 4,500.
Department's 45.
Yep.
Okay.
It's probably should be 4,300 instead of 43,000. You know, that 38,700 may make the total 1% under last year's.
Yeah, if it added up to that, I have to double check. So that's gonna be, yeah, we are really in good shape as far as the budget.
Comparisons, yes. Instead of being 1.3 over, we might be.
Right, right.
1% below with that edit, but.
Yep. And I do wanna, I mean, like sometime with the fire, like I know they focused on the things that they're more aware of than the things that we came. And like we just, we just, this week got, you know, from the league, what our workers' comp and property and casualty are and stuff. And we got one figure and then the next figure was like 40,000 more. And it's like, what is this? And so, yeah, so, so some of these, those, they just, it concerns me that I may want to tweak them at the last second just to make sure those, you know, workers' comp and.
But that electricity should be.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then the only other thing, I was just gonna say, you know, with the general insurance, you know, because engine two, I believe, they shipped that one out. Would they cancel that policy, you know, or?
Yeah, they have. I already have it off the schedule.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I contacted the league when they sold it.
Yeah, okay, good. And then there was.
So that would, that would make that 179, 182.
And then I had one more.
Yep.
You know, on the highway. With the sand saw, plow blades.
Yep.
You know, 55,000. You know, we purchased 700 tons of saw at 87.50. That's 61,250. And I don't know if, if, you know, that's what we have available to us and we're only gonna purchase $55,000 worth. But we did approve the purchase, you know, of 700 tons at 87.50.
So are you, you're looking at 410.52?
Yes.
Okay. So the reason it's down is because we don't, last time we needed plow blades and we don't need that expense.
No, but I'm thinking about the saw. The saw, we bought 700 tons at.
Right, but it's all, it's all combined in there. So like last year, the 77, 75,000 included salt, sand and plows.
But you're saying that is more.
700 tons to 87.50 is 61,250. We budgeted 55,000. We budgeted 55,000.
I have to double check because we only spent 45, 4,000, so.
No, but we just approved it. And the only reason I know is because I made the motion to purchase the 700 tons at 87.50.
For the salt?
For the salt.
Okay.
We had those two bids.
Right, yep.
We had the three bids.
Yep.
And we went with the dry, and that was 700 tons at, uh, 87.50.
Okay. I can, and that just.
That 61,250 dollars was for that contract.
Right.
And we budgeted for salt 55,000. That's my only question, Judy, is just, you know, I, I was thinking that, well, maybe we don't anticipate using 700 tons and we anticipate using 55,000 dollars worth, that's why it's in there, it's 55,000.
Right.
But that was just a question, you know.
I mean, we only spent last year 45,000.
Yeah, you know, so.
So it's like, did we, it's because we didn't use it. I know we had, we had sand left over this year when the time came, so we hadn't ordered any more of that right now because we had a surplus of that. Um, but I know salt was just delivered, I think, a while ago. So let me double check on that. And what I can do is just email everybody and let you know what the, what it does to the.
Clear that question up, yeah.
And then, um, did we want to touch on what they're talking about at the ring building? If it's going to be a year-round building, what, I mean, what are they, are we talking about?
Um, that's, I was going to use that in executive.
Okay, very good. All right, anything?
I had one more, and that was on the, uh, the listers department.
Yep.
You know, the correspondence that we received from Lisa, you know, it's kind of difficult to ascertain any finalized figures from, you know, the material she gave us. I wish that she came to one of our budget meetings and spoke to us, but, uh, hopefully next year she will. But when I look at, you know, the computer and IT costs, you know, we're proposing 4,500 and, and already, we've got the catalyst annual fee, that's 33.88. The annual cloud hosting is 1,500 dollars. And then the additional users for just the reappraisal year, we approved the 2,000. You know, that's 6,888 dollars. Now, I don't know if that was computer and IT or that was, uh, also added, you know, to a different line item. We had the catalyst annual fee, that was 33.88.
Well, I put some of it into contracted services.
Okay.
So the 10,000 includes some of that, because I was trying to figure out, you know, if it should just come under reappraisal and that's it, or, or not. But I feel like the reappraisal is the money we put in there to get this done and I feel like the contracted services should be different, you know.
Yeah, and I agree with you, I knew, and that's when I was looking too at the assessor services. You know, the 19-6 was for fiscal year '25, that's a non-reappraisal year. And then it's the same for the coming year, the 19-6. You know, so I assume that's just for the normal operation of the appraiser's office.
Right.
You know, and then, then, when I was reading, you know, the correspondence and she was talking like, uh, you know, she needed $26,000 for the, the appraisal office, you know, during the, or the assessor's office during the appraisal year. So, so I was thinking, well, maybe that 7,000 was included in that 10,000 other contract service you did. But I just had a difficult time trying to come up with that final on the appraisal year, Judy.
And I actually went back and looked at all the breakdown of everybody involved in this when it's become
Yeah.
a little crazy, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um, and all these charges, unfortunately, last year, there was no, no, um, nothing given to me for their budget. Um, it was just salaries. Not knowing that all of these things that I've already incurred in this fiscal year were not budgeted for because I was never told that these would be the cost for this year and that we're already paying for those, a lot of them. So, um, and, and I mean, we're just, we just got, uh, bills today for the mapping, which I'm questioning that, why that charge is so high. Um, we just got charged for a portion of the software, the conversion. So all of these things just keep adding up. So, I mean, I'm comfortable bumping this budget up even more because I'm concerned that the funds aren't going to be there.
Right, but I, I don't want to, I, I, we also have funds from the timber harvest.
Right.
So, tho, tho, those are funds, we also have ARPA money and those are funds that we should be using for things like this rather than, um, laying it on the back of the taxpayers. I mean, ARPA money is definitely for that and.
Yeah.
So, I, personally, I don't want to, I don't want to build anything more into the budget in that respect. I would be much more comfortable allocating from ARPA X amount, or not ARPA, what are we calling it now?
The asset fund.
The asset fund. Um, allocating X amount of money from that and then, um, going from there, I mean.
And I think we've built some cushion in if we, if we make the reappraisal fund payments for the current budget year and the reappraisal fund allocation in fiscal year '26. I think that allocation or the reappraisal fund will have like 113,000 dollars in it, so there's some cushion there, you know, to pick up some of those expenses.
I, I think we should just allocate X amount of money from the asset fund and set that aside and say that this has been set aside for the reappraisal. And then if we don't use it for that, then that money can, goes back in the bucket and can be reallocated. But I, I don't think that we want to build more in here.
Yeah, no, Lisa, that wasn't my intentions to build more. My bottom line was going to be that with, with the reappraisal fund, I think there are sufficient funds to cover this. But I just, you know, I was confused by Lisa's, you know, information that she gave us.
I mean, because we have other costs that are fixed costs that are go, I mean, the audit's going up, you know, 5,000 dollars. So, you know, those are things that we have to be cognizant of because next year, it's going to probably go up again, so.
That's all I had.
So, what would the board like to do? Would you like Judy to go back and run these numbers? And would you like to have, um, a special meeting to approve the budget? Um, there's a lot, or does the board want to approve the budget tonight? I mean, you don't really have final numbers. I would like to know, like, where we are, up, down, flat. I think that's important, once you approve the budget, to, to know that information. That's just the way I look at it.
I would recommend having a special meeting. Let me do the numbers and give you a clean slate. I don't want you to approve it, knowing that there might be some changes that need to be made.
All right, is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you. All right, um.
January 1st, we'll meet.
A motion would be in order at 6:39 to move into the bo, the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. In your packet, received, um, correspondence that I had received along with, um, along with the ordinance, yeah. So, pleasure of the board. It's going to be a parallel conversation for sewer also, so.
Yeah.
You can decide where you'd like to have the duct of the conversation, here or in sewer.
Well, the first comment I would like to make is the ordinance says what we do and the only question I would have is, do we do what we say we do? You know, I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, what's been done in the past, you know, just to apply it uniformly and.
Well, I think it's been a mixture of things. I think certain things have been done differently each time.
Yeah.
Um, depending on the situation, the circumstances from just the history that I've either been part of or have heard of.
And, and if that information is available, who they may have spoken to? And in what form was it, in just the verbal or was it?
You mean this, this situation right here?
Yes, this, this one.
Like, two prior town managers.
They, they did speak to, to.
Yep.
Okay, so it did go to the appropriate person.
Yep.
Yeah.
That means a lot right there. Ever really.
Yep, Michael brought it to the board, sat right here, talked about it at one meeting.
Oh.
He did.
Oh.
So, I would say that the ordinance has not been applied uniformly. I went back and read multiple things today because it was a slow day for me and, um, people have been abated, um, big numbers have been abated. Um, things have been abated without any, um, real reason, uh, that they've been recorded. Um, and, um, I don't know, we can save it for executive session if you want to talk about that, um, so.
No, I don't mind being transparent.
Yeah.
It's been, there's been, the only one I'm, there's a couple that I'm aware of. One was abated. The other one was, um, all the other ones I was aware of or that I've talked downstairs, that they were, um, reduced a certain amount of what they were charged due to, say, a fire and the existing dwelling being gone.
Yeah.
And so they still charged water and sewer, but it was a reduced rate. And then one was abated because they said they were no longer using the water.
But it had a pass, it, well.
But the thing is, when you say it was Michael that brought it up at one, you know, this says goes back to 2019 now.
Yep.
Do you know when they first brought it to somebody's attention?
I, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know if we can get that information because if it were in 2019, well, then I would be almost receptive to going back to 2019. But if they both brought it to the attention of somebody in 2021, well, then that's the point that I would say, okay, that's when the request came, that's where we'll move forward.
And if it was just a conversation, I probably, I doubt there's anything in there that would.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I could, you know, hunt down, see if something's remote, like, written in an email or, you know.
Yeah, I think we're really kind of, without the information, we're really.
Well, if it, the residence was purchased in 19, but they did not reside there.
Nobody resides there, no one has resided there.
Well, that's my point. Nobody resided there since 2019, but they were hooked up.
I don't think there were any pipes in the property when they bought it, I think it had been.
Pretty well stripped.
I mean, if it was taken out, taken down.
Yeah.
That's no use, in my eyes, at all, of any.
Yeah.
You know, and then reconstruction of the building is not quite complete, but it's close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, my suggestion would be to really take that into consideration, that.
I would concur.
You know, whether it's totally abated or not, or reduced a significant amount, even from that time, but it says it's, you know, of course, was purchased in 19 and I know there was nobody there, there was, it was a vacant lot, so.
Yeah.
Out of fairness here and, you know, of course, talking consistency with, with, uh, whatever we've been doing with other residents. This, you know, situation is, I don't say it's unique, it's.
I don't know that it's that, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, there's currently a house in town and I queried that and I'm not sure that if water and wastewater is being paid on that because it's also vacant, so, um.
But it says here, they've, you know, stepped up, tried to step up and get somebody's attention about the whole thing, which is, they're doing their part.
Yeah.
I don't think they walked away from anything and then expect something later. I think they were chasing it, trying to get
Yeah.
some resolve or some answers of some kind, that.
And there were some inconsistencies here, so.
Yeah. Did, when Michael brought it up, did the board make a decision at that time or?
I don't re, I, I, in my notes, I don't show that, it was just a.
FYI.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Is there a ballpark figure or do we want to?
I mean, it's something that we could, um, look into and have a number for the January meeting. Maybe that's better, yeah. Come with the, come with the number to the January meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know how, how it would work, anybody's going back if there's a refunded amount or if there's a reduced rate going forward.
Well, I don't think we would refund.
Right.
I, I think you're going to have like, uh.
I think you're going to have.
Yeah, something going forward.
Forward, there's going to be a.
Yeah. So I think that can be worked on and be, um, ready for the January 13th meeting.
Yeah, I'll get the figures.
Um, is there any reason to go into sewer because it's going to be the same conversation?
No, not really.
Yeah, no, no.
All right. All right, anything else for water?
Nope.
Okay. So a motion would be in order to come out at, and resume the regular select board meeting at 6:47.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Uh, sheriff's report is in your packet. And town manager's report. I mean, if you don't have anything other than the budget.
No, did you want, did you want to go before the sheriff's report? I just had one question about the sheriff's report.
No, go ahead, what's the question?
You know, because, uh, on page three, what's the second page in front of it? But it says page three on the box, no, I guess that's three hours.
Yeah.
The, the one Andrew Cross for 57980.
Yep.
Uh, he lists Marlboro Mobile Patrol, Clarendon Avenue, Town Select Board Meeting. I think that's for West Dratlin's activity. You know, he wasn't here at our meeting, we just approved that, uh, minutes. You know, and then you look at the, the top line where it says Andrew Cross Proctor, he started our shift at 18:30 and ended at 2,300. So, I would just ask Judy that, just to confirm that, you know, he did spend the four and a half hours in Proctor because it doesn't say that he did here in the report.
Yeah.
You know, it lists the activity for West Dratlin and if, if, if they say, yes, we did patrol Proctor, well, then good. That's the only thing I have, Lisa.
I'm glad they're doing some fines and some of these, uh.
Yeah, there's a pretty steady fine at, uh, each one. Last one, it was five something, this is three something, right? Yeah, now it's 535.
So. I'm glad they're actually doing something rather than just sitting.
Well, there's a lot of station in here.
Yeah.
So, all right. All right, do you have anything you want to add or?
Yeah, I did do a, the only thing is, um, I got the, um, thing from the printers today with a time, timeline and they want the first draft of the annual report by January 21st. So, that's why I, I got to get this budget finalized and then I got to get the water sewer budgets done and then get everybody's reports and, and compile everything by the 21st of January, so. So, full steam ahead.
The same company then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which makes it easy because as far as formatting, you know, we can just send it and.
No, I thought their price was
Yeah.
reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anything else for old or new business? All right, a motion would be in order to move into executive session for personnel and contracts at 6:50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are in executive session.